Order. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Todd Ward.
Here.
Greg Nelson.
Here.
Tom Jordan.
Here.
Dick Sample. Paula Stewart.
Yes.
Jason Hill.
Here.
Harry Juning.
Here.
John Green.
Here.
Tim Mann.
Here.
Rich Evans.
Here.
Tiffany Peters.
Here.
Jeff Wilby.
Yes.
Jeff Wilby.
Here.
Absent any additions or corrections, a motion to approve the agenda.
I would like to add a closed session meeting to the end of the meeting.
Sure. For?
Personnel.
Personnel. It's a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of a closed session at the end.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Comments from the floor?
Bob?
Yes. I'm Bob Liner, and I called Ree Smith the other day, go to Lee's Rowan at the end of Sequoia. She's rather tall, and she came out and she said, "Well, you own that property." And I said, "No, I gave that to the village when I put the subdivision in," and that, I thought that was. And she told me, she said, "No," said, "You own it." So I went up today and found out. So what I would like to do, I would like to deed the door to the village with the understanding that they'll start and get that sweep through. It connects the village and we'd have a complete circle. And hopefully, we can get something done with this. And in the meantime, I didn't want to push more or not, so. But I would like for you to give some consideration.
As far as running that through, I know that's a project we've looked at before, and I'm not saying we can't, but I don't know if it's something we'll do right away, because I know that's about a million dollar project to go through there because of that, and I know you and I talked about this before.
Right.
Because of that little creek that goes through there.
Yeah.
So it's not a cheap project, but.
No, but in the village, many times, I have thought, suppose my house was on fire and there's an accident here on the highway, then have to clear around, and that's where it used to be limited. And I'm not an insurance man, but I think with the very watching with the insurance companies, so if you give us some consideration, I'd sure appreciate it.
Absolutely.
What is the address of your home? Where is it that you live, and what was your address?
Twenty-one fifteen Lee Sequoia.
So they can run some post apartment and everything, so I can point them those for it to attach brightness to Mr. Liner's.
I see, so he's on the other end?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's not actually property where he lives now?
Right, right.
It's a property he owns, yeah.
Yeah. I, oh, okay, I see what you're saying. I thought maybe you lived right, okay.
Yeah, well, I live twenty-one fifteen B now.
I see.
Yes. Mike?
Ree?
Yep.
Good evening, long time no see. Good to see you, Jeff. Haven't seen you for a while. Two quick things. One, I just kind of wanted to address some of the social media posts. I think some comments were made by some people that I have switched my Facebook page, I have. As some of you, most of you know, I was an admin on the Morgan County Watchdog page. That is not the reason why I switched. And the recent post coming out concerning South Jacksonville on Morgan County Watchdog pages was not made by me. I'm not even an admin, I wasn't even an admin on the page. I had nothing to do with it. I may have promised myself I was going to wash my hands and everything, and I pretty much have. Reason being is without a state's attorney that's willing to prosecute public corruption, you're pretty much wasting your time. So I think some of you who've been on the board for a while know that according to the Illinois State Police, she had a flamethrower forgery case sitting in the Morgan County State's Attorney's Office. My understanding is didn't want to spend $600 or whatever for handwriting analysis. So whatever that's, they're busy. I've got golf course, so Jay's having a time to real killer, I guess, but anyhow. That being said, just publicly, the reason I switched my name, and if you've called me Woody for years, was on the vice of legal counsel because of the issue with the wind farm that was very vocal about. I've been having some, a lot of intimidation, some kind of quasi threats, a little bit of vandalism at my home. I live in the country, so that's basically the reason. So I just wanted everybody to know, clear the air. Now concerning the wind farm, I think there's some issues that this board may be interested in. One is the change in the regional planning commission. And for those of you who don't know, I think in 1996, when the regional planning commission started, it was for the whole county, and pretty much hasn't done much, I think, which is obvious by looking at Morgan County, which has turned over the last forty years. The mayor and I have talked about this before in the past, and I see it getting worse now because they're going to change it. They've already taken the wind farm issue out from under the regional planning commission and have handpicked zoning board. And my recommendation is to say, if you want to see economic development in South Jacksonville, and I think you guys got the best opportunity, come in from Jacksonville from the east, what do you see? Turned parks and abandoned AC company buildings, wheat seven foot tall, which is very attractive economic development. You come in from the west, it is much better, but if you come in from South Jacksonville, it's a pretty nice entrance. You've got a lot going for you here. And I don't think you're going to get any assistance out of Morgan County. The regional planning commission, for all practical purposes, is not going to help you. And one of the reasons the regional planning commission was set up was so that the taxing bodies in Morgan County could work on economic plan together, address their needs, what they needed. And then the regional planning director, one of his jobs was was to go out and find grants and coordinate everything. You know, I think it's pretty obvious that hasn't been done. You've got a $4 trillion federal budget, billion dollar state budget, and if you look around at some of the other counties around the state, Illinois, some other cities, they do a pretty good job of identifying those grants and getting that money. But they have real regional planning commissioners and directors, if that's what they do. You know, taxing bodies identify a problem, they see what they can help, what kind of grants out there. So I just suggest that maybe, maybe a committee take it up and see what you can do about developing your own economic development plan. Maybe contract with professionals to identify grant money that would be available. And we'll give you a quick example, what's the animal shelter? I contacted them for a lot of FEMA money, because they have a lot of FEMA money available. They moved places out of the floodplains. Two and a half months went by, never got a response, kept working with the county, regional planning director, finally got a response, "Oh, yeah, you know, I looked into that test. Money's all gone." Yeah, no kidding. That's the way that grant money works. There's only limited dollars, and if you're not checking the on the spot, trying to get that grant money, that money's going to go. That's all I want. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Approval of regular session minutes for July 2nd, 2019. Absent any additions or corrections, a motion to approve those minutes. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We have any correspondence? Audit update. Our audit is going to be, I forgot to write it down here in my notes. Tiffany, our audit's going to be in October meeting, is that correct? Presentation is going to be in October meeting, and they flew through it pretty fast this year. They were done in three days, three and a half days? Three and a half days, so.
Was there work here? Did they still take back a lot of work?
Yes, but they were here for three and a half days. When I first took office, they were here for seven, eight days still, and it whittled down pretty quick, though, so.
It's going to be the 3rd, October 3rd?
Yep. Prairieland Heritage Steam Show, that's going to be September 27th, 28th, 29th, and that's going to be their, help me out here, what's that? Fiftieth anniversary, I wanted to say 75th for some reason. And they've got a lot of big special events planned for this year. Illinois State Fair, the Electoral Officials Day this year is August 17th. Normally by now, they have something in my mailbox, so I didn't check this afternoon, but I don't think I had anything in it today. So normally, they have some invites out by now, but if not, I'll let you know if we get anything in the next few days.
Hey, Harry?
Yes, sir.
You skipped a little bit.
I sure did, didn't I? My apologies. Thank you. Just wanted to get to the end really quick, I guess. Important stuff.
I wondered about that. I should ask you about that pretty soon.
Motion to approve the June 2019 treasures report.
So moved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. And the 2019 payables, general fund checks, $247,249.13. Total tip checks, $4,146.50. Total motor fuel tax checks, $43,516.11. Total tours and checks, $550. Water sewer revenue refunds, $211.58. Total water sewer refunds for the month, $1,095. Total manual checks issued for July 2019, $6,013.8. Total July payables, $253,262.21. Motion to approve the July 2019 payables.
I have a question first. And Tiffany, maybe you can answer this one for the contractual employee that we've been talking about quite a bit, Alice Hancock. Pulling her check, I do see an invoice attached. It says number 43 on it, so would this mean it's the 43rd invoice?
No, I don't know that, but I would assume that this would be.
Would that be about right? From when I'm thinking she started? Okay, so my question is, and Jeff, you might have missed a lot of this. We were talking about, she's not employed by the village, she's contractual.
Okay.
A question has arisen about a contract for her or a letter of engagement, something that shows what services. This invoice simply shows me the hours. Well, you guys, for example, Brownhean Stevens.
Right.
Okay, so this is, we have a really elaborate invoice from Brownhean Stevens. Says the date, services, hours, amount. We also passed the contract.
Engagement, engagement letter.
Yes, which told us what you would be doing for us. So I'm curious, do you know, because at the time we had our last committee meeting, we did not know if we had a contract with Alice, so before I want to approve this, because this just tells me she worked 40 hours. But do you know if there's a contract?
Okay, I have searched and searched.
Uh huh.
And here's the best answer I have. We do not have a contract, but we do have, and it's a great place that I found it, that I never,
Okay.
I wouldn't put it there, but there's a letter from January 25th of 16 that shows a rate that they agree on. It doesn't mention specific duties, it doesn't mention, it just says temporary basis during the transition period, a rate of $39 an hour. It doesn't say anything what the.
Temporary basis.
Right, but there's no intake, there's no terms of contract.
Okay, right.
Only one thing there is, is a rate, and it says to please submit an invoice each month indicating the dates and hours worked, which is what she's been doing. Yeah, and that it'll be submitted to the board. Yeah, and actually, this I just found this today.
Okay.
It's been, I didn't think we had this, I really didn't. It's on the vendor file, or it was behind the, actually, behind the first check that her, that was before it was here.
Do you happen to know if that, since you know it was January 16, did you happen to look at board minutes by chance to see, did we pass, and what was it called?
I did look at board minutes.
Okay.
The agenda, actually.
Okay.
And it was, on the agenda, it listed independent contractor is what she was.
Did it say her name?
Yes. Not on the agenda in the minutes, it does.
Okay.
In the minutes, it does say, I believe, temporary base, maybe? Or maybe, no, it doesn't say temporary basis in the minutes. It says to help them in the office transition, something to the side, but they're all.
Okay, perfect.
And it's a January 16th.
Wonderful. That's way more than we had. Okay, so Jeff, my question then would be, because we have this, and that was, I don't know if you consider that a letter of engagement, it doesn't explain what she was doing?
You need a letter, you need a letter of engagement with an independent contractor.
So here's my concern. We know what we're paying you for. Matt Martin is IT, I have seen those come through. I know what we've hired Matt Martin for. I don't know what we've hired Alice for, and that's what we've, our discussion's been at these last committee meetings. So I don't want to withhold, like, not pay Alice, but my concern is she's not really a contractual employee with the village, or is she?
You can have a unwritten engagement, but it's not advisable. I would definitely figure out what it is she's doing, articulate what it is she does, and work that into an engagement letter with an independent contractor or an independent contractor agreement. Go to that formal state. Now with, I don't know about Matt, but I mean, with our engagement is with the village. It's, you know, we are hired at your pleasure, and this is what we do. We provide general legal services, and we agree in that letter to provide itemized statements about what we do, who does it, what work it was, and when it was done. So something similar to that would be fine. It doesn't have to be a formal fancy, you know, contract. It could be in the form of a letter, but it would be better coming from her, explaining with your approval what it is she does for you on a regular basis, what limits there are, and how many hours she could work or whatever.
Exactly, because I know, it's varied at times.
Yeah, and so it sounds like we just need to sit down with this individual and, you know, articulate, describe what she does and what parameters are going to be placed by the board. So I would agree with that.
Okay, and I, so I mean, I don't want to hold her check, I don't know how the rest of you feel about that, but she worked, these are for past services, this isn't like a, I mean, she's already done this. She's done the work.
That's for July.
And it's through now. So she, she hasn't worked any past this. Okay, so is it within our rights to, I mean, I'm not comfortable having her work for us anymore until I know what she does?
How many, how long has she been employed like this?
She's not a full.
I'm sorry, misspoke?
Like four years.
Since January.
January 16.
Okay.
Is the temporary letter we have.
Yeah, okay, well, my suggestion would be that you would approve this payment since it's
Sure.
for past services, and then just make the, in the next, before the next, she's paid once a month?
Correct.
Okay, so I would just say before the next payroll process, again, misspoken, the payable process, just make sure we have that in place and signed and approved.
Because that would have to go through a board approval.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But you need to start, I think, if we, you and I talk about this, we can come up with some kind of a short engagement type letter for her. Yep. Yeah, if you give me, if you give me an itemized list of the things she does, then we can. Okay, good, perfect. But I would say if you want to condition further payments to her on having an engagement letter
Yes.
in place, that'd be all right?
Well, I don't know what I'm paying her for, or what I'm approving payment of. I mean, it's not that I don't trust Tiffany, but I'm not going to have you either come and say, "Hey, Paula, you owe me $2,000."
Right.
"You've got to approve that."
Right.
I mean, I want you to show me what we're paying, and you know that, yeah.
Well, I'd like, honestly, I'd like you to hear from our auditor too, before you even put into terms, you know, like that. I don't want you to feel like you have to sign a contract just off the line. You know, you'll hear Suzanne's take on it in October. Not saying we can't get something in place before then, but, you know, so you're very comfortable with the terms, and, I mean, or conversely, if you don't feel we need our services anymore, you know, it's up to the board, so.
Too informal now.
Right, yeah. So were you saying then, I understand the part about creating the letter, but I'm still uncomfortable with her working. So were you saying she could still work, or she should not work?
Does she work tomorrow, for example?
No.
When's the next time she'll work, do you know?
She usually comes on the 3rd of the month, because that's when we've got kind of a timeline for everything we did in the office, you know?
Okay.
It's usually that 3rd week that I.
So if we could get that put together pretty quickly, you know, she just maybe, she doesn't work until the approval of the agreement, the arrangement, whether we call it a contract, whether we call it an engagement letter, whether we just call it an agreement, makes no difference to me.
It has to be approved by the board, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So what do you do if it doesn't get the approval, and then she has hours for this August? You know, because it won't be passed till you're saying September meeting, right?
Well.
Oh, yeah, this is August.
Yeah, so you'd have, you wouldn't have a meeting before she starts to work again?
I mean, well, it wouldn't be September meeting, I guess you could do it at the committee meeting or whatever.
We could have a special one.
Or have, yeah, or you'd have to have a special one. That's all I'm saying is.
No, no, I agree.
Because then, you know, if it didn't pass, then you're obligated to pay something that didn't pass.
You'd have to, you would have to pay for people who work for you under, it's an established pattern and practice is what she's got right now.
Okay. I just didn't know.
So I would agree with you on that.
Okay, so do we have to do, Jeff, anything special then with this to make sure that we, I mean, I don't want to withhold the check, I don't know how the rest of you feel about that.
I agree.
I mean, she worked, so I don't know, do we need to make some kind of special motion or addendum to that we need a contract before?
If this has been the practice for three years, I wouldn't change your practice tonight. But Tiffany, I believe is confirming that these hours were incurred. So I would say go ahead and approve the payment tonight, and then that will be the impetus for both the village and for this individual to get a contract, a more formal contract agreement, engagement letter in place before she works again and get that approved.
Because this has been, the only reason I would withhold is if I was still going to get blowback on, "We're not going to get the contract," or "We don't know what she does," or, because then I would just be like, "I'm done with this until we see something, a letter or a contract." I mean, I'm not going to keep hearing that we don't know what this contractual employee does. And I don't care who shows us or who tells us, but I don't think we're doing right by the village by approving payment for, you know, a contractor, we don't know what they do. So that's the only way I would want to change what we've done for three years, by not approving. And I know that's not right.
Yeah.
I don't want to do that, because she deserves her pay.
She was working with the understanding that the same practice that has been in place since 2016 was in effect. I wouldn't change it tonight.
Okay, yeah, no, and I don't want to, I feel like, is that our duty as the trustees to make sure the contract is in place for independent contractors? Because if we're supposed to be spearheading this, then we're going to spearhead it.
I would say that it would be up to the village. If you've got independent contractors, they should be, they and the village should be, there should be an agreement in place that at least bare bones spells out what they're going to do. I mean, I don't want to use, you know, our engagement letter isn't terribly detailed.
But your invoices are incredibly detailed.
Right.
Yeah. And Matt Martin, I have no, I mean, I know what he does. So Tiffany, in your estimation, if you just, I hate to ask you off the top of your head, but do we have any other independent contractors that you think we need to know about, that you don't think we've seen an engagement letter or something about?
Not that you're using, like, on a monthly basis, like.
Okay.
Kind of as an employee, but not an employee, like, I would think they're trying to be IT consultants.
Those are the three.
Auditors, accountants.
The auditors.
And she did just give us some ballin'. We did just get their letter of engagement.
Yes.
But that's really a yearly thing, I mean, that's not a monthly, but that's.
But that's okay, that's okay. If I've got it for the year, is that what you would consider that, excuse me? Great.
Absolutely. And then PR's a lot also, I don't know if you consider that part of it too, but, you know, just during the summer. But they submit same way through payables.
That's up to you guys, because see, I wonder if maybe when we're fixing this with Alice, could we get that in our packets too? Because you give us Brownhean Stevens. Now you just gave us this tonight, some ballins, which that's only once a year, so it's not going to be monthly. But would it be too much to ask for, to have Alice's, or?
It's not too much to ask me for that, as long as I have it from the independent contractors in time.
Okay.
It only depends on, like, when the day falls on the first of today.
These are your auditors, right?
So it's always a really fat turn.
Oh, yeah.
And when you get your packets, most of the time, it changes.
Okay.
The way we have it now, is we have to email it out or.
That's the only camp we have, is the one we're talking about.
Show it to the day of.
Who does the independent audit?
Okay.
Other than that, it's.
Same people who were.
Tiffany, is Alice paid to buy the job or hourly?
That's her.
That's her.
Okay.
Okay.
She's a lot paid as an employee, so we don't pay taxes on her.
Okay, she's like, "Look, I got it."
Yes.
And you said that was $39 an hour she gets?
That's what the contract said, that her rate was changed November of 18th to 4th, an hour.
So that letter's not correct anymore?
No.
Yeah.
But it seemed like they have been.
Right, yeah. So technically, we have no contract with her for a $40 rate.
Yeah, and I don't consider it as a contract really, I mean, it don't.
Yeah, I don't think you did, Jeff, did you consider that?
But it's more than I have.
No, that's more than I thought we had, so I'm really glad you found that.
No, it's just good practice to put this in place. This is a good point and a good step in the right direction to get her brought up to speed with all the other outside consultants that you've got. It doesn't have to be as detailed as the audit engagement letter or our engagement letter, but it should be in place and.
Yeah, it's not fair to Alice either.
Let's do it.
You know?
Absolutely, I agree. I mean, there needs to be some sort of agreement between us and her that this is what your job is, and it's protection for both her and us.
And then, does it say in that letter who her supervisor is by chance?
It doesn't, and I will say, I may have missed along with the board, and it may be my fault, but, you know, sometimes I take a little too much responsibility because I'm the office manager, so the office I consider to be my responsibility. Alice doesn't work for him, she works through him. So she's always reporting to the mayor, whether it was Mr. Waldrick or Mayor Jennings. She doesn't work directly with them, but they.
She reports. She reports results and findings and so on to them. So maybe we could talk about this in the closed session personnel area?
Sure, okay, yep, whatever you think works. Do you need anything else from Tiffany? Do you need a copy of that that she has, or when you guys get started talking about that maybe?
I don't think that is particularly going to give me any detail. I just need to know general, it's general bookkeeping type services from what I gathered here. Okay.
Okay, so we don't, back to that original question a while ago then, do we have to say anything? We don't have to make, does Megan need to make any kind of note about when we were discussing approving the payables?
I would, my suggestion is just to pass the payables as presented with the additional comment that the legal counsel and Tiffany are directed to work with Alice Hancock to compose and present a engagement agreement with the village that would be presented to the board for approval at subsequent meeting.
Okay, and that Mrs. Hancock will not work until that's approved?
If that works as a practical matter, you can, you can, either you can have a special meeting. This is not going to take more than, you know, a few days to get all this put together and.
That would be awesome.
Get this done. How you handle that with a special meeting, how you want to handle that, it sounds like you've got about a couple of weeks to maybe get this in place. And I think that would be, that would be a reasonable restriction to place on her that before she works anymore for the village, we're going to have this agreement in place.
If the board's willing to meet again, to do.
If, that, correct, but it sounds like you need her, you know, toward the end of the month.
If she truly is an employee we need, a contract, you know, contract that we need, then we need to have it correct, and when you. If she truly is an employee we need, a contract, you know, contract that we need, then we need to have it correct, and when you need it. Okay. Okay. Did you get all that, Megan?
Yeah.
Is that motion there?
So, a motion, I will make that motion, oh, sorry, Greg, oh, Greg needed something.
Well, I was, I was just going to add, while everybody was talking, I found in the minutes online, the actual motion and everything.
I can read that if anybody wants to hear it.
I want to hear it, yes.
This was a night when Steve Waltrip was not able to be here, so the next senior willing to do it was Mike Elliott. So, he was the mayor, and says, Mayor Elliott asked for a motion to retain two independent contractors to assist with, assist with office management services, and so one of them is Alice Hancock assisting with the office manager duties at a rate of thirty-nine dollars per hour, and the other one was a woman assisting with what are sewer clerk duties, who is not doing that with us anymore.
Oh, yeah, I remember her, yeah.
So, that was what the minutes said.
What was, what was the date of that meeting?
February fourth of 2016. Yep.
Okay.
And it said assisting with the office manager duties.
Yeah, I got that.
Just so everybody knows, it's Robin McQueen does, McQueen does still assist us also, she'll actually be in office.
Oh, she does? Okay.
She still does.
My apologies.
She fills in when Carla's on vacation.
Oh, okay.
But is she an employee though?
Separation of duties, she handles the posting of the water bills.
She contractual? Do we have a contract with her? You know, I'm going to ask that.
I'm going to bet probably like this, she doesn't, she's not a monthly person, basically she covers.
But shouldn't we have?
That may be once or twice a year.
Yeah, once or twice a year.
Tell me her name.
Robin, but it's.
It's R-O-B-Y-N, McQueen, Mike, Steve McQueen.
But wouldn't, if she's contractual then, and is there anybody else, John, that works for you that's contractual?
I didn't think for my part, that's.
Well, she's.
Because it's once or twice a year, what do you think about it?
If there's anyone else, speak up now, or forever we'll do.
As we go along, you know, and as we think of stuff, and if we find things, we can sort of clean them up as we go along.
Tiffany, what is, so he's down on her, what is we're paying her?
Sixteen dollars per hour, according to this.
Okay, that's, I.
And what are, what are, what's her general duty?
She does post, she does post the other bills, water bills, when they come in, when the water clerk is on vacation.
I did not know she still worked here.
Just, it's just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, there you go, now there's two things, Jeff.
Okay, you've got two, all right. One, number one?
Rob Lefton's making you dear.
Yeah, he's, he's on the, he's on the beach, I'll be working.
More than Rob ever does.
See, this is the trouble, when I, when I fill in for Rob, people realize how little he does.
Yeah.
Just kidding.
Yes, Paula made the motion.
Yes, thank you, Greg, for finding.
A second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side.
We need to be sure to put that back in there for Alice.
All right, billing permits, we have a total of five billing permits, total estimated cost thirty thousand three hundred dollars, and total permit fees fifty dollars. Schedule committee meetings, we already have one committee meeting scheduled for the codification. You want to go ahead and schedule the one for the end of the month, if we want to do, you want to do the twenty-ninth?
That's good with me, just kind of our usual.
That's kind of, yeah. Six or six-thirty, I don't.
Twenty-ninth?
Yeah.
That's for codification.
Is there something going on? There's, we've got an extra week this week, so you want to do the twenty-second?
We've got codification on the thirteenth.
Thirteenth. As long as you bring cake.
We can bring cake, that's not a problem.
Oh, you can have a joint birthday.
Yeah, we enjoy cakes, so that's.
Monday, twenty-sixth, eighth, and what?
Did you hear that, Mimi? You've got to get a cake for everyone.
Yours is the thirty-first, yours is the first?
Thirty-first.
Six or six-thirty?
Six-thirty.
When was the meeting, the twenty-ninth? I know when everyone's birthday is, but when's the meeting?
August twenty-ninth at six-thirty, a committee of the whole.
Okay. What time did we say?
Uh, six-thirty.
Can I ask them if we have the codification meeting on the thirteenth? Would the board be able to just meet on the letter of some engagements then, to take action on those?
That'd be, yeah, that'd be, we'd have that.
Can you get them by then? But there's two now, Jeff, can we do two?
They're going to look a lot alike.
That's what I was going to say earlier, because we've, we've got to go through the codification stuff that night, so we can, yeah.
So, this, that, that would be a meeting, I guess, for Megan's sake, that we could schedule like five forty-five?
Yeah.
Just knock it out before the codification and then.
The special meeting?
Yeah, I mean, before the six-thirty, yeah.
Or do it, what time is the, is it six?
It shouldn't take any longer than that, just make it six.
Is it six?
No, it's six-thirty.
Codification is at six.
What we'll do, what we'll do is, we'll do it, we'll schedule it at six, the special meeting, and we'll just have the codification meeting scheduled for immediately following.
Okay, cool.
So.
Good idea.
All right, committee reports, personnel, we covered, we've been talking about the job descriptions, and then we've covered the, yes, personnel, the volunteer firefighters we're going to be hiring, and we covered positions for the public's work department. And I'm thinking there's one other thing. Oh, we've covered our personnel training, but that was for elected officials. Planning in public facilities? Dick's finance, he's not here.
I'll look up my notes, because I don't recall.
Well, are you looking that up? I know we have some updates on the water plant, our water plant's running manually now, is that correct?
Well, but we're not running it.
We're not running it, it will run manually, but it's.
Run manually, the drives have been put in, but we're still waiting on the telemetry, because they can't communicate back.
But a water park is on temporarily, sort of. Yes, so.
That is basically, according to my notes, all we talked about, other than Danny Lynn's retirement in September.
Yeah.
That was the only other thing we talked about.
Finance and Dick's not here, I don't think we had anything since post-budget, did we?
We talked about website design.
Yes.
And then Rob preparing the resolution stating we will require all contractors to pay prevailing wage according to the state, whatever, the thing we're voting on tonight.
Yep. Parks and tourism?
We talked about CNR's mowing, their bid to do the fabric emulching under the fence, and where the pine trees used to be. And then also, oh, I don't remember who said it, somebody said that the entrance sign that'll have like the park rules and times and all that. I think at the time it was said it would be ready early next week, is what I wrote down.
So, it's ready, I just haven't picked it up yet.
Okay, cool. That's all I have right now. What's that?
The rock that's going up there.
I talked to.
Justin?
Justin.
Justin, yes, all I can remember was the nickname you had in your phone. I talked to him on the phone yesterday, and he was, said the pricing was very much according to the size of rock, because he said the vast majority of the expense is based on shipping, which makes sense, yeah. So, he said that behind their place, they have a sign that's a very good example of the type of rock we're talking about. So, I drove by and looked at it, it's like three feet tall. And I thought it was probably an okay size, but if anybody else wanted to, I mean, just swing by on your way home and take a look.
Talking about the one on Greenwood, is that what you said?
No, I'm sorry, at Dawes's place. You go in the parking lot and you go around to where, like you're going to the back door, it's like right on the corner. So, I mean, that, it kind of gives you a visual of the size and.
That's the size he's suggesting?
Well, he just said that was an example.
Oh, okay.
And then, so if we looked at it and thought, oh, that's a perfect size, or it needs to be twice that tall, or, you know, a foot, you know, whatever, like, it'll give us an idea of.
Tell them to roll it in here.
Oh, yeah. It kind of gives us an idea for what to say, because the scale of it is not something I think.
I guess it depends on what we want, you know, all, because we're, the lettering on it. So, I guess it depends on how big we want the lettering, how big we want this.
Yeah.
Rock, so maybe we need to figure out how big we want this lettering. I love if we're going to have lights on this rock also to, let's see if the lettering on this.
Well, I think.
That gives us an idea of how big a rock that we would need.
Because I think like we're, this would be just replacing the, the wooden sign that's there, and so it really just, I mean, it would like, as far as the word content, it would just be like Goshrie Park, Playfair Park, whatever it says, and then the year it opened. And I, the one that they have doesn't have nearly that much wording, and so I think it would be kind of, to fit all that stuff on there, it'd be kind of small. But it's not a billboard either, so I don't really know, and I was wanting to tell you guys to swing by and look and.
I've got a picture of it on my cell phone for anybody here who wants to see it.
Before they leave tonight.
Awesome.
Of that rock he's talking about? Oh, good, okay.
I didn't know you were working on that too.
You seen that one on Greenwood, it's, I can see that address.
He said that he talked to.
That one's a nice size, I like that.
My husband always says, what's their address?
I've taken a picture with me standing next to a tired four-year-old.
I need that, without my.
Wouldn't stop in the car.
We might need something as big as the one on Greenwood.
We might, because I like that one.
You can read it easily when you're driving by.
Thirty-six inch fine rock, you know.
Is it? It looks pretty big.
Then, the one behind Dawes is bigger than that one. And it's also got a big flat side to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you'd say it's bigger than the one on Greenwood, right?
Well, it's probably three and a half, four feet tall, maybe four or five feet wide, something like this.
Oh, nice.
It's a big one.
Something substantial that kids can't pick up, right, Tim?
Nobody's going to steal it.
They're not going to walk over.
If that's what they're saying, that, I think that would probably be the best, I'd say just, you know, that's plenty big. If it's four feet, four or five feet wide, that's a pretty good size.
That's a good size, yeah.
Put some solar lights on it, color it.
All right, public protection.
Let me follow guys approach for the small tree that we put in everybody's package. Hopefully everybody got a chance to go through all that, and not to reopen a topic that you folks have already closed, but in reference to the independent contractors, when you go through that process, if you'll hand down something to department heads, letting us know.
Oh, good point.
I think quite honestly, there's dozens and dozens of independent contractors throughout the course of the year. We have installers that are, that install equipment and vehicles, and I, I don't mind going through that with Jeff's office to give, but give us some kind of guidance, whether we need to do that, you know, is it somebody, if we contract with him once a month, do you want to see that? Or, or twice a year, whatever the case may be.
That's a good point, because we've never had that discussion. I don't know how involved, I specifically offhand think about the.
If it's something you just deal with once, once a year, I mean, there's no really sense, I think, probably to do that.
But that would be the case of the water port thing that you, that you talked about, so.
Oh, you mean with her?
I think anybody that works in an office, so maybe that's my feeling on it, I don't know about the rest of them, but yeah, that's a good point, we should talk about that in committee.
Yeah, just whenever you hand that down.
Is there a rule of thumb?
Are these, are these, this, this work that you're talking about, sounds kind of technical, do they not have, they don't have a company? They're just individuals?
Some do, some don't.
So, the, the company, if it's a company, established company, they should have a service order, kind of, it's not an engagement letter, but it's a service order, and you, you agree, authorize them to do this work, that's, that's how I would see that.
Oh.
And that's not common, Jeff, with.
With those companies.
For example, GTSI, we have a car right now that's going out there in the morning, they're going to diagnose it, they'll call back and say, this is what's wrong, do you want to move forward?
Right.
We won't sign anything, I'm sure that's, in a perfect world, that's how it's supposed to happen, it doesn't necessarily happen. And I'm, I'm okay, I'm just saying, as you discuss that, if you give us some guidance as to.
That's a good point, yeah.
How deep in we'd like us to get with the company before they're, Matt Martin, I don't think we have one with Matt. We, we, everybody agreed, and Matt services all departments here, but as far as an engagement letter, I don't think, unless I'm mistaken, I don't think we'd have any.
And I know we did specifically for the website, because that was separate, I also know Tiffany brought to us, you brought us something, whether it's considered a contract or engagement letter, that would be good to know. I mean, I know what he does, but I don't, I can't answer you if I.
He brought us a cost proposal, the.
I do remember that.
Five hundred dollars per month.
Well, I think you hit the nail on the head, and you said, it just, it's going to be somebody in the office, it's impractical for Tim and I to do.
Oh, exactly.
Like Tim said, if we take it to GTSI, if we take it to bring them down, that's impractical for us to be doing this. So, I think where you differentiate it is office or not.
Well, and as you discuss that, just if you could hand down, and again, I apologize.
Well, because even GTSI services several of you, but you guys are really good about coming to us and saying, hey, we're going to GTSI, whether it's fire department or police, you let us know that.
Yeah, I'm just going with your, more than an office is more like, could anyone else take another employee?
There, there you go.
That's, yeah, because people get confused about a contractual person, because I even said employee, contractual employee, no, they're not, they're contractual. Okay, well, and maybe you guys can guide us on that, Jeff, of where we draw the line, we don't want to cause unneeded paperwork.
Sure, absolutely. I apologize for reopening that.
Hey, don't apologize, that was good stuff.
Because we don't want you griping when you leave here, Tim, you might as well tell us here. How can we make your job easier?
Hold on, can you say that again?
No, no, that's to them. So, we, we had an opportunity ahead of time, thankfully, to get this together in your packets, is there any questions? We kind of talked about this at committee meeting, the regulations and reference to parking, it's very standard, and it would actually replace or repeal, we got that correct word in that ordinance.
Okay.
And then the, also the RV ordinance, it, it was, as I explained last time, it was much more than what we thought we were taking on it. We looked at sixty different communities, took their ordinances, and kind of piecemeasured what worked in our community, and hopefully. We feel very well about this. But I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody does.
I, I like, I think it's very fair, because I heard over it, yeah.
Yeah, I do too.
Moving to the resolutions for the squad cars, please accept my apology, the VIN numbers, Richie was, he offered those to us, and he said, don't count on these being the correct ones. What do you mean? He said, well, they're on a truck, and they're being shipped here, I'm going to give you the VIN numbers that they should be, but they're never right until they're on the ground and we have somebody verifying them. My thought process was, if you all voted on a resolution and they were incorrect, it would cause a bigger problem.
Right, right.
Prior to actually purchasing these and writing a check, they will have the correct VIN numbers, and you will have a copy of those. And then the resignation letter, just a brief explanation, Brock Meyer, Austin Meyer, was a full-time officer with us, took the job at the State of Illinois Department of Corrections, he agreed that to stick it out a while and see, he's really one of the state of law enforcement, didn't have the, the time, as it turns out, to commit to us, so he, that's in your packets also, he did his resignation letter, and was a very good officer, sorry to lose him, but was a new baby, and two children now, and a great job at the State of Illinois, he was not able to commit to what he felt comfortable with the departments. Any questions? Thank you.
Let's quick, a couple things here, we had a pretty steady month, forty-six emergency calls for the month. Brings us up to two hundred ninety-nine calls, as of yesterday. I got the two new hires names in there that go over in the action items. One quick note, we've received around two hundred ninety rule fire payments, we have about sixty left to go, and I'm going to try to send out a second note this, this month, I think it's a year's past, we only just sent out one, but I'm going to try to get these other sixty to get there.
Okay, and Chief, do you mind, we were talking about it right before the meeting, maybe before we get to action items, so we can just speed through those, but touching on action item eight, the tourism grant for boat races, because Tom Winter had asked if you might help with the ambulance, do you mind updating us before we get there, because we don't really know, we didn't know when we left the meeting.
I did talk with Life Star manager up there, explain the situation to him, I didn't want to, you know, step on their toes, maybe in the main angle provider, City Jacksonville, South Jacksonville, so he's perfectly fine if we want to help out, it'd actually help him out some, because they have football games and races and everything else, so it's kind of a tough schedule for them to do. I did make him aware, if we do go forward with this, that. I did make him aware, if we do go forward with this, that we would probably not be able to do it on Friday, so he was doing the best to get a crew out there this last day. I'm gonna have a meeting this coming week, and I can let you guys know yay or nay for sure on getting staff and a crew out there for Saturday and Sunday.
And so would Life Star, if you don't wanna do it or can't do it, do you think they would do the?
I think they could probably pull it off, I mean, they're in the same boat as we are. Get extra people coming to do it, so.
I'm just curious as how we do the request. You said he, did Tom come in today?
He did, I didn't speak with him today, but I spoke with him earlier in the week. And I don't know, we just weren't communicating on the same page, but he kept repeating that he was only going to, he lifeline for fifteen hundred, because his village was taking care of the other sixteen hundred, whether it was to Life Star.
Right.
Or to the ambulance, and I kept telling him, if I were on the board, I said, they didn't tell me this, but I would assume they would still want you to list the entire thirty-one hundred, because that still is the amount of the grant, whether you then pay that to the village or to Life Star.
Yeah, still services provided.
Yeah, it's still, you know, like one way or the other, that's being donated as a grant, so I don't know what he actually put in that application, um.
I think he put thirty, because he called me and asked me to call him back, and I said, well, the board doesn't know, because we were gonna wait for Chief to.
Right.
Tell us, so he said, I did put thirty-one hundred, but he said, whatever, however you guys wanna handle it, so you don't really know till Monday. Yeah, so, I don't know, how do you guys wanna?
So we need to put that in on the thirteenth also.
Oh, that's a good idea, maybe we could wait till the thirteenth.
If he's gonna find out.
It was on the last slide.
If he finds out this week, then, then we can do that also. Because that's what he asked for, is the fifteen either for us to supply the ambulance, or for the fifteen hundred to pay for that.
Right.
So that's why we said that the Friday we wouldn't, so.
Sixteen hundred.
Oh, I'm sorry, whatever it was, but, uh.
Yeah, he asked for fifteen originally, and then he wanted sixteen for the ambulance too.
Right, and then we said that, you know, we could possibly supply the Saturday and Sunday, and then we could just make up the difference for the Friday.
So I guess we could do it two ways, do you guys wanna, no, you know, it would be better to wait, because his, we need that paperwork correct before we do it. But we've already approved the agenda, can we do that, Harry?
Yeah, yeah, we just, just table it when we get to it, it's no big deal at all.
Then, then we'd know, and he could make the paperwork correct.
Yeah, just table that item when we get to it.
Does that work for you, Chief? Okay, perfect, good, see, we made action items shorter. Table that. Thank you.
Okay, resolution to approve millennial, am I pronouncing that right? Millennial training. Bi- 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 millennial training for elected officials, and we have the resolution here, motion to pass that resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion, uh, action item.
Who said it first, Tom? Dick Samples, Todd Warwick.
Yes.
Paula Stewart.
Yes.
Jason Hill.
Yes.
Greg Nelson.
Yes.
Tom Jordan.
Yes.
And the, uh, resolution for understanding for the Prairie Wage Act. I'll make that motion?
A second.
Second.
And so the public understands, what we used to have to do is, we have to pass a Prairie Wage ordinance every year. And the states kinda wised up and realized that a municipality the size of ourselves really can't go out and, and enforce those kinda things. So what we're doing now is, we're passing this resolution that says, when we hire contractors, we're gonna make sure that they understand that they have to pay Prairie wage. But now that's between them and the state, because the state can enforce that stuff, kinda stuff, we can't, so. Motion to pass this resolution of understanding. We already got a motion to be.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Todd Warwick?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples, Jason Hill?
Yes.
Okay, engagement of services for CRs to do the, oh, I thought you were raising your hand.
Sorry.
To do the, the, the mulch, to tear up the, and replace the mulch around the fence at Godfrey Park, and that was for three thousand dollars.
Now, remember that three thousand is labor, we're supplying the, the mulch and the fabric.
Labor only.
Right.
What's that?
Was that in the packet?
Uh, we had just had that little form that they passed around.
And so that was okay, because I thought Dick asked for something more, but.
But then there was more written on it that he didn't realize, so we kinda talked about it.
At the bottom, at the bottom, okay, then I'm, yeah.
So if everybody was okay with that, that's fine.
Because I think he, I would just remember him asking, but Dick didn't read it all.
No, he didn't, and it went around the table, and we had further discussions on it.
True.
I can go get it if you want, it's sitting in my box.
No, I do remember that, so I'll, did anybody make the motion?
Not yet.
I'll make it.
A second. Is that, Tom? Roll call, please.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Dick Samples, Todd Warwick?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Okay, revise it, how, so what you're.
Well, what I would say is, what we say here, office of vision, take that out and say, per the specifications described in the letter from Marl Brothers Ford.
Okay.
Tweet that a little bit.
All right. Okay, for our resolution to purchase vehicles, our attorney has made the recommendation that we remove the VIN number from the resolution. And have it be per the, per the specifications from the letter from Marl Brothers Ford. That way there's no issue with the VINs, is that, did I word that right?
Right, if, if, if we're not sure about the VIN, VIN number, then I, my suggestion here i- is in the three places. We prob, well, let's see, I can, if you give me a minute.
Sure.
If you can.
How about we go, wanna skip that and come back to it, or?
Yeah, let me, I can, I can come up with the wording, and then I'll.
Do that, then we'll just skip that one real quick.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll skip number four, we'll go number five then, approval of hire of public works department, Phil Black, at a rate of fourteen dollars per hour. Motion to approve his hire.
I'll make that note.
A second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples, Todd Warwick?
Yep.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
And we'll have to re-advertise for the, uh, code enforcement officer position, but we also have some other options, which we can discuss at committee too, so.
Does he need to resign from that position?
He will.
He will, okay, so that'll just be the next step, and then we advertise, gotcha. Next slide, right?
Yes, next slide, approval of hire for the, let me go back to my, read off the names here. James Martin and Donald Jewell. Sorry.
And are they South Jacksonville residents? Those are the two you were talking about, great, very good.
Volunteer, uh, fire department. Motion to approve those hires.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples, Todd Warwick?
Yeah.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Chief, I, I don't know if you said this, and maybe, um, listen, um, do they have any kinda terroratic or EMT background?
Please do, you know.
Said you not, okay. I didn't know if it was asked, and I don't remember who that.
Todd did ask that.
Did you?
Yeah.
Last slide.
It was the last slide, yeah.
In your defense, I was waiting on just slides, it goes.
But that was a good follow-up question, Jason.
All right. Back to number four, resolution to purchase vehicles.
Okay, uh, if you've got your resolution, the draft resolution in front of you, uh, just a couple changes will fix this, I think.
Got it.
Um, in the second recital, uh, instead of referring to the VIN, the VIN number, uh, I've changed this to say, whereas Marl Brothers Ford Inc., Greenfield, Illinois, has offered to sell the village a twenty-twenty Ford utility police SUV. Parenthesis, as described in the letter from Marl Brothers Ford dated July eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, close parenthesis, for the sum of thirty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. In number one, point number one below, um, that would now read, the village of South Jacksonville hereby accepts the offer to purchase the twenty-twenty, uh, Ford utility police SUV. Parenthesis, as described in the letter from Marl Brothers Ford, uh, dated July eighteenth, uh, two thousand nineteen, parenthesis, uh, for the sum of thirty-four thousand, three eighty-five. And then the second point would simply say, the village president is directed to execute all necessary documents to effectuate the purchase of said twenty-twenty, uh, Ford utility police SUV from Marl Brothers Ford Inc. for the sum of three, thirty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Otherwise, it's unchanged.
Good job, is there an extra charge when you do that?
Right on the spot, no, no, you get that, that's all included.
That's all included.
I don't know how Rob does it, but I just throw it in.
Rob charges it.
I'm pretty sure he would've said, see you in September.
Yeah, yeah, I'll do that.
No, no, Rob, Rob would've done it.
We're giving him a hard time.
He would've done it the exact same.
No, we're just kidding, we're just kidding.
You're, you're not our destiny, are you? That's number four.
Okay, you haven't gotten a motion yet.
Not yet, motion to approve the, uh, purchase.
I'll make that note.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Gotta retithe it.
Oh, okay.
Um, Dick Samples, Todd Warwick?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yep.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
All right, resignation of Brock Meyer from South Jacksonville Police Department, a motion to approve his resignation. Second? Second? Roll call, please.
Todd Warwick?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dixon.
How old is his little one now? Roughly. Eight months, well, wish him the best with his little one, and with his job in the state, so he's a good officer. Uh, tourism grant, a motion to table that till our next, uh, special meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Uh, ordinance for RV parking. Motion to approve the ordinance for parking regulations, not just RV parking, so. Uh, for parking regulations, chapter seventy-three A, motion to update that ordinance.
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Dick Samples, Todd Warwick?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Okay, and a motion to approve South Maine billboard usage for Prairieland Heritage up through, up through September twenty-ninth. Second?
Second.
All in favors, oh, sorry, roll call.
Todd Warwick?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yep.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Okay, a motion to close open session.
So moved.
Second?
Second. Who was the, Greg?
Greg and Paul.
In the meeting.
I've got one thing a little bit.
Go ahead.
You don't wanna wait?
We, we talked about this, but the road repairs out behind quick and easy.
Okay.
I think there was some miscommunication, some misunderstanding, um, we've all talked about it, we know it has to be done, and I think the last time we talked about it, we talked about, you guys were trying to decide how you're gonna pay for a lot of county you were coming out of. And we said, well, we could do that later, the engineers took it as, we were waiting to see if we were gonna do it. The Molars were gonna do it when they got done with Michigan, they never heard from us, so they went on to the next job. They still can do it this year, but it's gonna be in September timeframe, so Jim Berg is gonna get the, the documents that, uh, they give us the same, uh, unit price as they did on Michigan. We brought the prices to you guys, I just want you to know, I'm gonna have you get the documents repaired, so we can present it at the September board meeting to approve it, that way when they're ready, we can go.
Okay.
So I just want to remind everybody, we'll talk about it, and, and, uh, I will have those numbers for you again, it has been a while, at, uh, what, the twenty-ninth maybe? And then, uh, we'll have an action item on, uh, the September 29th.
Cool. And I, I know we, I know we talked about it before, I wanna make this quick, you said behind, so that's just from, or does it come all the way out to?
It's gonna come from the intersection, the stop sign there, behind quick and easy. On Comfort Drive, and it'll go from there all the way to the new asphalt, to a Ford laid down for love.
So you're only, that's only like a two-hundred-and-fifty?
That's a whole section.
Right, right, and then there's one other little patch we're gonna do out by the stoplight.
That's, that, the reason I asked is, because I, I seen that the other day, so I didn't know if they were gonna do an L there.
No, no, there's, that section will come up and rip this out, um.
And just do a thirty-yard section.
Exactly.
Where it's broken up right there.
Right, right, and it's all on that price.
The board granted, uh, the VIN video that, uh, grant for remembering fallen and asked this month.
You know what? August twenty-one?
What's the, what's the dates on it?
August twenty-eighth, September third.
Very good. On the square.
It's the nine eleven, uh.
Oh, yeah.
September fourth.
Oh, yeah, thank you. That should be exciting.
I think this is the first time.
Wonderful.
For the nine eleven one thing, but, uh.
Wonderful, we like that.
Motion to close. Do we have a motion?
Yes. And then John Vunne did it.
We're waiting on the, roll call.
Roll call.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples, Todd Warwick?
Yes, ma'am.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
You know, they need to be aware, because it's, it's a tricky slope, and I don't know what we can actually do. And I'm not, I, I don't even wanna talk about that specific case anymore, let's see if we can fix anything. I don't wanna confuse voters, why would we wanna confuse voters? So I guess that's my point.
Okay.
Just to use our stuff on any sign, not just election signs. Any type of.
Shouldn't, yeah, shouldn't we have, do we have to trademark our village logo? I mean, if.
That's a good question.
Because why could anybody use our village logo, and then think, someone thinks it's part of the village? I guess that's where I'm going with it.
Right, uh, yeah, you can't, you can't, um, um, you know, can, you can't present to, no one can present to the public that they are the Village of South Jacksonville.
Yes, but it was done in a way that people thought the village was endorsing two candidates.
Right, right.
And that wasn't the truth, so that's, that's my point, can we somehow stop that?
Yeah, okay.
And have everybody play on a level playing ground, why are we trying to confuse people, or slide along the line of legality? I mean, I'm not saying it was illegal, but is it ethical, is it right, do we wanna do that? That's my point, but I don't know what we can do, so should it be a resolution, can we do nothing? I don't know, but I don't want to be shut down in a meeting, and then have it appear that I just can't ever revisit it. No, I'm gonna revisit it, because I still don't like it. So that, and the social media policy, if Rob can work on those, because we have a committee meeting, and then just give us his thoughts on that.
Just to specify, you were shut down in a meeting, because you were trying to make a, an investigation on two citizens, so like I said in that meeting.
I wasn't, a, a resident was.
Well, well, that's not a resident, but that's okay, um, but what you specified in that meeting, as a trustee, what you said was, you wanted the board to launch, launch an investigation, which would bring repercussions on the village. So that would place us in liability, so, yeah.
And exactly, Rob said no, so.
Yeah, that's why, that's why you were cut off, our attorney said, no, you can't discuss that.
And I'm fine with that, because I'm confident that that resident will follow up with the state board, and the chips will fall where they may. I'm worried about what we can do in the village, and so.
I'm just clarifying that, that's why that was cut off, it wasn't anything to do with.
Yes, so please, Jeff, when you tell that to Rob, say it's not to do with that incident, I could care less, because that will be taken care of in another arena.
The way I regard this assignment is to let you know, uh, what the, what the rules are, what, what's the.
Absolutely, that's all I wanna know.
I'm not, I, I, yeah, we're just gonna tell you what the.
Yes.
What the restrictions, what the limits are, and what the, what the freedom is.
Absolutely, I am not revisiting that other incident, so please make that clear to Rob.
Understand.
It was shut down because we cannot do it, I'm fine with that, like I said, the resident will take care of it. I wanna know what we can do as a board.
Okay.
Okay? All right, there we go. And, yeah, and then the social media, do you think it's, um, out of the realm to think Rob could at least have an idea to share on the twenty-ninth?
On the twenty-ninth?
Yeah, to just say, "Hey, Paula, this is what I found on this," and it's a no, or we can do this, or we can't do anything.
And this is from the standpoint of.
Just if it's worth us talking about.
Public officials.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think so.
If we can just, if it's some, because if we don't need to talk about it, 'cause we can't do anything, then drop it.
I think, I think that's, I think August twenty-ninth would be.
I don't want him to come with anything prepared, just to say whether we could do anything on social media and the electioneering, and then we can decide whether we wanna move forward. But I don't wanna drop it without being able to put on record that we've discussed it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No old business.
Any new business?
It's my turn?
Sure.
All right, I'd like to go on record and say that, uh, it's a proven fact, um, even by the videos that we shared, by the person that it was mentioned on social media, that I stormed out of a meeting.
I think you can say names, right, and, or Jeff, can we say names?
Yeah. Trustee Greg is the one that takes the videos from every minute of the meeting.
Uh-huh.
Um, it awfully, obviously was, uh, said by our village mayor that I stormed out of the meeting, I don't know if you'd like to comment on that, where you got that information from?
Yeah, you got up and walked away, and you were called back. You got up and you said, "I'm done with this," and you walked away, and then you came back.
Was that, I don't remember.
We can review the video.
I would like to review that.
We were here, Tiffany left, and then Rich left to give you your purse.
First, before we stop, uh.
Yeah, I'm not gonna argue about it, we'll just watch the video.
Yeah, that's fine.
Greg, did you watch the video? What did you see?
I did, and I, um, started it roughly when the conversation started, and, um, it was kinda late last night, so I didn't watch, watch all of it. But I was hitting the, like, thirty-second skip, jump ahead deal, 'cause I figured, 'cause I, I don't, I didn't remember, so I figured, you know, if Jason got up and left and then came back, it wouldn't be in a, in a span of thirty seconds. Um, there would be at least one jump where he wasn't there, and the only jump where he wasn't there was, um, him getting up to dump ice out of his cup. And you can tell because the ice was super loud in the sink. And so if it was quicker than that thirty seconds, um, of actually walking away from the table, uh, 'cause there was a, a time where you got up and you were standing.
I remember Dick standing too, wasn't he? I think Dick was standing over there, yeah.
At some point. But actually, like, walking away from the table, it was just the dumping the ice.
He didn't leave the boardroom.
No, I didn't tell you to let the boardroom.
Uh, no, I mean, unless you consider.
But it was put in there that I stormed out of a meeting, and I was asked, I came back after I was asked to.
Yeah, there was people there that said, "Come sit back down."
Who said that?
I don't remember.
He didn't leave the meeting.
He walked away and said, "I'm done with this."
He didn't leave the meeting, he didn't leave the room.
No, he didn't.
I would like to hear those words come out of my, so I would like to, for us to view that video, 'cause I've already viewed it.
Well, you can view it all you want.
And also, and also, I'd also like to touch on, um, emails that were sent by, uh, Mayor Jennings.
Sure.
To the radio station that involved something that, uh, was talked about in a closed session meeting. Um, what do we do about something like that?
Are you referencing the closed session? The, uh, I'm assuming you're talking about the, uh, the application? That, that was in the meeting where you were repeatedly told that that was information that should've been discussed in open session?
No, we talked about this in a closed session meeting after a committee meeting.
Yes. And our attorney kept telling you that that was information that needed to be in open session, yeah.
Um, I don't even think our attorney was present at that one.
You're talking about when your, your, uh, your wife applied for the job, yes.
And that was in closed session meeting, correct?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so you sent that to the media?
Yes, I did.
Okay, uh, is that not right?
That, that's.
The advice.
You brought that up in an open meeting, when you brought up the positions, and you, you brought up the people's names in an open meeting, so you, you opened that up. And that's your bias, in that you're reflecting on that position, obviously, because of what your wife said to you about that position.
But it was also in a closed session, right?
It doesn't matter.
I mean, you just admitted that.
Yeah, it was in closed session, and it shouldn't have been, that was open session material. And, and then you brought up stuff in an open meeting, so you're opening that door to that material, so yes, that it should be public on why you're saying the things that you're saying about that position.
I guess I'm confused, 'cause I asked if that was said in a closed session, that was the only time it was talked about, right?
Yes, and I'm saying that it should be public, because that, that's your whole justification for these two positions that we keep talking about being unified into one. 'Cause you're saying that your wife applied for that position, and that you're incorrectly stating that our accountant interviewed your wife, which she's never interviewed anyone. And, and then you're saying that your wife told you that when she was interviewed, she said that these two positions would've been one, is what she was told, and that's been your whole basis for all your comments that you've made. So, yeah, the public should know this.
I, I, I guess I gotta ask you, the, the attorney, is it legally right to talk about something in public to a media that was talked about in closed session?
Public officials can say whatever they want in public, whether they, uh, should or shouldn't, that's up, that's not to me, for me to decide, or a lawyer to decide. Uh, but there are, uh, public officials all day long, everywhere, that talk about things that are, should be confidential, and they go ahead and talk about it. So that's what you're kinda getting at, uh, your question about, about, uh, um, what, what, what public official can say and can't say, and so on, it's free speech, so.
So essentially, there's nothing you can do.
I.
You just have to take it.
I would say.
Yeah.
I would say that, uh, uh, the, as a public official, you choose to, to talk about things as you may. Uh, and, uh, that affects the relationships you have with other people on, on the board, definitely. Uh, it affects the relationship you have with the voters.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's up to you.
It sets your tone for what kind of official you are.
Right, and it's.
So even if they wanna slander ya and tell lies, that's all on them.
There's a free speech, the First Amendment, that you can, and there are legal, there are legal, uh, remedies, uh, for, for certain, uh, comments and so on. But public officials are, public officials, they can, they, they have free, free speech, they can say what they want. Uh, if they go over line, if they go too far, um, then that's up, that there are legal remedies for certain, certain violations like that, yeah.
Okay, well, I guess I'll just voice my opinion, um, I think it was ridiculous by, uh, from yourself to do that. Uh, and even, and, and I hope you watched this video, because, I mean, this is the guy that takes the, the video and the minutes, and he just explained that I didn't do that.
Oh, I don't take official minutes, that's.
Well, I'm not the video, and you viewed it.
Well, and I'm sure that video will be public, and, you know, the opinion goes both ways, I think a lot of things that were said there were inappropriate and unprofessional, so.
Well, I, I think the big word here is unprofessional, that you would choose to slander my name to the media, and on Facebook, and on Facebook.
I'm not slandering anybody, I said, "What happened in the meeting?"
In a closed session.
Yes, that should be public. I, I said that his wife applied for a position, and that's, and that's the entire reason that you're basing your opinion on those two positions.
And Jeff, is there not, when someone applies for a job in the village, does that have to be public when they don't take the job? Is it supposed to be, like, if I applied and I didn't get it, do, and I don't know what the legal, like, if someone comes to apply, do they have, um, uh?
Reasonable expectations.
Yes, of confidentiality. And do we break that when we start saying, "This person applied and they didn't get it?"
Would've never known about it if her husband would've brought it up in a meeting.
The only reason I want that out.
I, I asked, hang on, yeah, but let me get Jeff to finish the question.
Typically, uh, you know, you, you, if you apply for a job and, and you're currently employed somewhere else, you definitely don't want that.
Right.
Application.
Yeah, 'cause we've just now screwed that, for anybody else that applies to the village, they may not wanna apply, because their name might be thrown out there if it suits someone. I don't like that.
It's po, it's possible, yeah.
Do they have ramifications? Can they come back to the village and say, you know, "I thought this was confidential"?
Doubtful.
Okay. It just, again, makes us look bad. We have this, "Look bad, look bad, look bad, look bad," it's just, we're, we're building this back up.
Well, just like we were told in the, in the very first closed session meeting that we had with the new officials, like, our, our other attorney said, "These are not secret meetings, all these meetings are going to be a public eventually." So when you brought that up, you know it was gonna be public, eventually, that's gonna be out there.
Well, not all of them, we just pick a few, we don't.
There was nothing in there that.
We don't put all of them public.
They should be, that was the, that was the exact words from.
So if you're gonna put it in there and tell everything that I said, don't just put it in there like you're trying to make me out to be like, "I got a personal vendetta against Mrs. Peters' job."
That's what it seems like.
That's what it seems like. So when I told in that meeting that you expressed that my wife de, or declined the job before it was ever, even Ms. Peters was hired, why in the hell would I have any kind of vendetta, I guess, especially when I sit and praise her?
I said, "It seems like that you think those two."
So you're not telling the whole goddamn story, that's the problem.
Okay.
So you, you're smearing my name, I've never done that to you, so why in the hell would you do that to me?
But I'm telling you why, I'm telling you exactly what I, I've said to them, is that I think.
That's what you think, right? That's your opinion.
I, my, yes, my opinion is.
But you wanted it out there, even though you didn't know the truth, right?
It's not, my opinion is that you think those two positions should be joined into one, based on what your wife told you.
Right, that's, I asked for information, because that was my opinion, did I get that information?
That you think those two positions should be one?
On paper, did I get the information that showed me any different than my opinion?
That those two positions should be one?
That one position takes care of other, another position's duties.
Did I get that you think they should both be one, right?
I didn't say one, just, do they handle duties of the other? Was I supplying that information? That's all I asked.
I don't know.
That's my duty is to ask questions, and to do the best thing for the tax dollars.
No, I agree with that.
For the taxpayers.
I agree with that.
Okay, so that's all I ever did, I never got aggressive, I never, all I was told was two things.
You did get aggressive, when you pointed your finger and you were yelling and saying, "I want this person here to explain their job."
That was after you told me, that you would tell me to get banned.
No, that was after that. After that, when I said, "There's no way I would bring an employee in that's been here three years and have them sit here when we have piles of job performance evaluations, and have them sit here in front of us and, and have them justify their jobs."
So you're saying, because I was pointing fingers and everything.
Well, you said you weren't aggressive, but I'm telling you you were.
You put in here that you understand the tempers flare, and that you're okay with that, right?
Amongst elected officials, yes, but I think when employees are thrown across fire, the, the media should leave them out of it.
That's what I'm saying, so you're going both ways here, now you're accusing me that I was pointing fingers and everything, but.
Well, you just said you weren't aggressive, so I was just correcting you on that.
I've never been aggressive towards Mrs. Peters, I'm asking for the information.
I didn't say you were.
Okay.
I, you just said you weren't aggressive in general, I'm just saying.
All I can say is, the fact of the matter is, are you doing this is ridiculous, and you know it.
No.
All the social media stuff that you put out there is ridiculous.
I disagree.
It's a stain on the village, and you know it.
I disagree.
You did, so, so with you, you're arguing with taxpayers of this village on social media.
Sure.
As if you speak for all of us, and Jeff, that's what I was trying to ask before, for elected officials, if Harry wants to put himself down that road, then let him ride it. I don't wanna go along on the ride, and so when it's.
In two years, I can answer to that.
Then if it's the village, people are thinking, he's speaking for us, because he makes comments that appear that we've already discussed something, "This is the way it is, this is the way it is, this is the way." We haven't even talked about it yet, but he's acting like it's an official, so how do people not understand? Because they're not, they're not gonna understand, we've never voted on things he's talked about as official. It, I, I mean, I don't care what he says, but when it involves the village, I do care. He can say whatever he wants on his own, and that's where I'm wondering about the social media thing. We are confusing the public with crap, and I'm tired of it. Because you've got six people up here who are not gonna agree with what the mayor is saying on social media. I don't talk to the public like that, oh my gosh. I don't talk down to them and tell them they have no idea what they're talking about, I mean, and then people comment back and forth, you know, "Oh, great, way to talk to us, blah, blah, blah," we're a joke. The Village of South Jacksonville is a joke, and it's.
I get tired of people coming up to me and asking me about what you're posting on social media, all the time. You don't have to answer every comment on Facebook.
Well, you know what, that's, that's my prerogative.
That's your prerogative, that I have to answer for.
No, you don't.
Yes, I do.
No, you really don't.
I represent the village for a reason, I represent this for a reason.
You know what's so odd?
People come up to me and ask me, "What is he thinking?" I don't know, you go ask him.
And I have people come up to me saying, "Thank you," so it goes both ways, so if you don't like it in two years, run through the spot, it's that simple. It's that simple.
All I can say is, don't ever do this again with my name on it.
I, you know what? Don't ever say the comments you said again, so it goes both ways.
Well, we're gonna watch the video.
Nope, that's fine.
And if it ain't the way you said it, and everybody just heard what he said, including the attorney, if it don't happen that way, then you better be fishing out some apologies. Are you willing to do that?
If you didn't do what I said, then yes, absolutely, I will.
Because you put everything out there to that man out there to try to look, make me look like an ass, and it's ridiculous. Now, when he, when, when they called me and had me do an interview, I guess I should've just said, "You're the biggest idiot, and, you know, you're the worst village president ever," 'cause it's my right.
If that's what you.
Did I do that? Because I have a little more respect than that. I'm only thirty-eight years old, you're older than me, so I would think you'd have a little more respect than me. But apparently not. You wanna make it look like that I'm out for somebody's job because my wife didn't get hired, are you kidding me?
You were the one yelling in the meeting.
Is that what you think? Do you feel that?
I wouldn't answer that, Tiffany.
I would like to have you answer that.
Is that what you was told? This is ridiculous.
Go ahead, Tiff.
You say, you can speak freely, you can say what you'd like.
I didn't think that at all at first, I never did that, um, and then I don't think that now, you know, like, I, I, the thought crossed my mind, and certain things seem to add up to that, but I, I feel like I'm pretty supported by all of you, so. And I apologize, I mean, I've tried to get every single one of you individually, um, because that isn't how I behave in the last meeting, that's not who I am, and, um, and honestly, I lost my cool, and I lose my cool, and, and I apologize to you, Dixon, you know, like, I, I, how's that line? And were it not for me doing that, maybe we wouldn't even have a story about it, you know, so, um, so I apologize.
You didn't feel like you were being harassed, did you?
I don't know, I would've used that word, um, but I, the wheels were turning, yeah, I mean, I think there's stuff that I, I, I know, like, it's frustrating for me because I'm a middle person with, between the board and the mayor, and from my seat, you guys need to communicate more, and I get dragged into it. Um, because obviously, Harry's my supervisor, and you're the board, um, and I do, you know, like, we, I do, like, you keep asking for job descriptions, you know, and I read it on the radio and stuff, and I, I've given us, you know, like, they're, they're in the.
Yeah, and we didn't give them.
But I, you know what I mean, like, but if we, maybe that's communication mechanics, you know, and like with the stuff with Alice, like, um, you know, where you're saying these old job descriptions, or there's not one, I don't, I can't do that on my own, I can't just put it in place without the board voting it in, if it's not there, it's not there, you know? Um, and I'm not saying that it's clean and pretty and that it doesn't need work, but from my seat, like, I wanna work with you to do that, not, you know, I don't need it, that it doesn't need to look like I'm somehow not doing it, or, you know, and maybe the mayor, you know, needs to express that more with you guys, and you guys communicate more, because it's just like with Alice Hancock, you know, like, um, there wasn't a job description, you know, and I appreciate that you asked for it so many times. Um, I didn't know you'd ask for it so many, because it was in closed session, but I hope you have one, I didn't hire her, you know what I mean, like, but we did sit down and make a list, you know, of stuff that she does, it's hard to put that stuff into words, you know, like, accounting, like, with you, you know, law, what do I do? Well, to actually, you know, list that isn't always, you know, so, um, but I have furnished that, and I, I don't, and it looks like I'm not, and, you know, like.
That's what it appeared, Tiffany, is that you were withholding.
And I'm not.
Information, and like, we had the, you know, engagement, something as simple as that engagement letter from Zumbalan, and you asked me today, "Hey, you guys have seen this, right?" And I'm like, "No, we passed it, and it wasn't in the packet," and you had given that, but it hadn't come to us. And it appears to me that you are withholding, but I'm finding out that's not the truth.
I withheld nothing, I mean, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I feel like I get you everything you need, and, um, like, the Zumbalan thing, I, I had no idea, when you were saying, "What does Zumbalan do?" I thought, "Well, how do you not know what they do? You just approved their engagement letter."
It was not in the packet.
You know what I mean, but that's from my seat, like, I have no idea that you're frustrated with me thinking that, that I haven't given it to you, when I think you have, you know what I mean, when you voted on it, and, so, I mean, there's. When you voted on it, then, so, I mean, there's just a lot of frustration with communication, I think, with everyone. I think that's the, I think that's what's really, and just kind of the, he said this and she said that and I don't know, like, that's kind of my take on it.
Till today, I didn't know you didn't have that in your packet. A lot of times I work off of my own, own stack of paperwork because I'm in here during the rest of the month and doing my own paperwork. So, if you don't have something in your packet, let me know. Or let Tiffany know, or let Megan know, let one of us know. Cuz I, I assumed all this time that you did have that engagement letter.
But all this time, you know, it was repeatedly asked and asked and asked, but it never, you know, you know, never occurred that...
And when, so when we had the meeting on the twenty-fifth, you had already sent those job descriptions, but we didn't get them, right?
Well, I, I sent them to you. I sent them to Harry. Well, I take that back. I sent the department head's, he asked for the department head's descriptions first.
Yes, yes.
So, I emailed those. And then later on, like the list from Alice, I made it together. But tonight, nobody asked me to do an email, but hey, but I went ahead and copied every position that was currently applicable and put them on all of your six to me, paymen, for the job description. But that's, that's what we're working on. You know, I've never cared for it.
Well, and that's what it appeared, and I feel, I do agree with you. I feel you're in the middle. And I don't feel that's fair of the trustees to put, I don't intentionally put you in the middle. You have always been extremely professional. And, you know, I've said that in closed session, I've said it in open session, I've said it on the radio, and I'll say it always about you because you and I don't always agree on things, but you don't hit below the belt and I don't hit below the belt with you either. We talk it out and I consider you a friend. I also respect your opinion. So, there's a difference between some of the relationships on this board and with you. I don't ever doubt what you say. You have never once lied to me. And until you do, I trust you. But I also feel like you feel torn because I feel like you think you can't tell us things because you are directly being supervised by the mayor. And I never want employees to feel like, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, this is my perception. I feel like you worry for your job sometimes and that bothers me. Because I can't fire you. There's only one person, and we just went over the personnel manual. There's only one person that could start something against you, like start that whole predisciplinary and everything in there. I can't say I want Tiffany fired, guys. There's only one person that can do that. And so, that concerns me because I feel like, and again, personal opinion, I feel like you are stuck. And I would do anything I can to alleviate that, but I can't control other people on this board. So, I can only do my part. And I, Jeff reiterated tonight that we don't have control. He did, however, say, we may talk to you individually. So, that's what I'm gonna start doing. And I don't ever think you would withhold something from me. And is that ideal? No. But that's where I'm at. I trust you.
I, I mean, I'll clear up. I don't want anyone to think I'm scared to, for my job because, I mean, I love my job, but life is on, you know what I mean? Like, if there'd be something, but not, um, but, um, I don't, I don't want to, you know what I mean? But I would never lie or do anything to, you know, like to, so, that's, you know, but I'm not, I mean, I don't want anybody thinking I'm scared of my job. I don't love the, the only thing, I don't love the media attention and the crossfire. That's what I, I mean, I'm just, I'm a flyboy to radar person. I don't like the attention and, um, and that's where, really, I like to stay out of being the middleman, you know, if you guys, you know...
Well, and I don't know how to fix that. Because you're put in that position. And, I mean, from my standpoint, I would do whatever I could to keep you out of it, but I don't have much control over the employees. So, I don't know how to fix that. Jeff, do you have any suggestions? I mean, you just have pretty much said...
I just like everybody to cooperate and get along.
Yeah, well, that doesn't work.
I know.
We've tried, yeah.
Yeah, right.
And I don't like that you, and I wanna publicly say this in front of everybody, I don't like, and I wanna make it very clear, I thought Ben's story was spot on. And I said this to Tiffany. He said fireworks in the beginning. I just said to you guys earlier, I worked in news. That was the story. Meetings are boring. So, when you have fireworks between a trustee and an employee, I would've written the same thing. And I don't think he belabored the point. I think he said it. He moved, that was a very lengthy article, by the way. You were only a small part of that. So, I don't fault, I mean, we created the story, so I don't fault him. What I hate is that you were pulled into it and then the social media storm exploded and then it became negative. It became like you were doing something wrong, which wasn't right.
Well, I'll take responsibility that I did get upset and, um, I think I told most of you, I mean, I, I'll say it on record, I don't care. It's the truth. Um, I had to leave because I was about to cry, you know? So, I asked for permission, you know, and it made it seem like I just left the meeting. I didn't. I specifically asked the mayor.
See, and I didn't even hear you ask. Probably cuz I was looking down when you said I'm done.
Initially, um, I, I was upset, I mean, not that it's here or there, but two other department heads left before I did. That wasn't important. I was one of the last to hang it out.
Yeah, but I think, oh, it was your, you stormed out, so that was the difference. You're right, two of them left.
You know what I mean? And like, and what I was...
Yours was more dramatic, Tiffany.
Well, I know, but it wasn't even a form on the agenda and...
Yeah, no, I get that.
And then, you know, I mean, you're not, not to pull a card either, but it was, it's always sensational when it's a loss, you know, like, and, and that's, it's the truth, you know? Like, so that's, that's where I got so offended by that and things and how people were saying...
I get that.
So, I did get offended by that.
But I also said, when he called and asked my opinion of it, I said, if I thought there had been harassment, because it was thrown out there that the radio station in particular, and I called Gary Scott to talk to him, because I've known Gary for a long time, and I said, that's bull. There was no harassment. Um, I said Tiffany was upset her name was in it, but I said I would've written the same story. But I feel like, um, when you got up and walked out, obviously, that created the story, but you should've never been in that position. I don't think you would've blown up like that.
And I, I won't. I mean, this is a big lesson and I, like I said, I can't apologize to you enough. Like, I don't lose my cool meetings. I don't have a history of doing that at all, um, but I just, I was there that night, you know? So, please forgive me. I, you know, I won't let it happen again.
All I can say, I guess to, to, on myself, the reason why that I asked for that, we were sent the office manager duties Monday. That's when we received the email. Everybody got the email Monday? So, all this happened last week, okay? So, in here, the first sentence, responsible for preparation and administration of the administrative budget. Okay? So, whenever I was told that she prepares everything through the audit and everything, that's why I had a question. That, that's one of my questions that I had from the beginning, right?
Fair question.
So, what you sent me involved a question of what I had. Is she doing duties of our office manager, correct? Okay. The other question I had was, was even on the paper that she supplied tonight where it said temporary. Does everybody hear that? So...
Which is what I've been saying since day one.
Were perfectly fine. Because actually, my questions are stated out right here. We just received this on Monday, which, you know, as of last week, you know, uh, you know, it was told that that wasn't, it wasn't given to the position whenever she was hired or whatever. So, I'm glad I got this because this kinda tells me I, I had something to come from.
Not trying to pick a fight with me, all right? Just let me air this out.
Yeah.
Those are a hundred percent legit questions.
Yeah.
Hundred percent. I think, and this is, again, just my opinion, I think when, when tensions rose were when you said that the only information that you'd been told after repeatedly asking these questions was that Alice was as good as gold. And that's when I saw things starting to get tense. Because you have been told. Now, were they lengthy? Did, have we gotten documents?
She takes care of the accounting and she prepares for the budget.
And does reconciliation and there's been...
No, I was never told that.
There, there's been, there's been some other things said. So, when you, when you said that was only said that she was as good as gold, that's as soon as when I saw it was like a lit fuse. So...
And I suppose it was a little bit if I could...
Hold on, just a second. So, is there, is there more detail to it? Absolutely. Is there, is there a more lengthy answer to your questions? Absolutely. Do you have legit questions? Absolutely. But that's when I saw that was when you said, well, this is all I've been told. You have been told more than that. Are there, is there still more answers to your questions?
Before you go on.
Yes.
If anybody agrees with that, please say so on the board. That we've been told that she does more than handle accounting.
Well, that's right there. Handle accounting is more than saying she's just as good as gold.
Worth her weight in gold.
Because you kept repeating that, that that was the only thing that you were told.
So, how many department heads in this office take care of accounting?
That, that's not my...
All of them?
You're, you're getting sidetracked. That's not my point. My point is, is that you were told that she, some things that she does, some things, maybe one or two, maybe three, I don't know. That's not my point. My point is, is that you said in that committee meeting that the only thing you were told that she does is that she's just worth her weight in gold. That was it.
Am I able to help a little bit with what you're asking? What's the job description? I, I wasn't given that when I came on, but I'm fulfilling every point on it. Uh, for example, on it, it'll say like responsible for payable to proceed with accounting. It doesn't say it's a list of things that I do myself. It says that I'm responsible for it. I have an accounts payable person that takes care of the accounts payable and I work with them.
Right.
And, you know what I mean? So, even though that's my job description, it doesn't mean that I do all that myself necessarily.
Oh, and that's a Jeff question. Because that was different. We were told at the meeting that the job description we would receive would be different than what she was given. Did they give you Stephen Danny one when you...
I said, I said it could be different because what she was verbally told.
And then it was, we were kind of going back and forth trying to decide, could you add something to it? I mean, and so Jeff, you can add to job descriptions at any time?
Typically, it says at the other, at the end of it, it says, uh, other duties as a sign.
So, that answers it. So, we should be able to look at yours and if it's not factual, then fix it. Because we were also saying, well, you can't change it. She's been here three years. And then I left and I'm thinking, okay, I, my boss can change my job description from day to day and I have two choices. I can either go with it or I can quit. That's my choice. And so, obviously, I don't want you to quit. But I don't think we should be like, oh, she's been here three years, we can't change it. And so, I saw that bottom line and I thought...
That's, that's on there, I assume.
Okay, so we, it is, because I saw it. So, we can change it at any time.
And my point from the other night regarding that, uh, was not that you can't have things added or changed. That happens to me all the time.
Right.
Um, if it plugs in, it becomes my responsibility at work. But my, what I, the point I was getting at, um, was more that you can't penalize somebody for something they were never told to do.
That's a great point.
That's the point I was trying to make.
That's a great point.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
And so...
And I don't think we ever meant that, but that is a good point. I mean, we weren't gonna say, oh, Tiffany, you were supposed to be doing this, but she didn't know. I don't, but I think what you're saying, yeah.
Okay, I just, I wanted to clarify where I was sitting.
I mean, I wasn't ever thinking that. I don't know if you guys are, I would not hold you accountable for something you weren't told. I mean...
Like I said, we, we wouldn't have been near this far. I mean, we found out more tonight through, how many times has it been that I said I asked for it? But yeah, everything's, I mean, we received this on Monday. We found it with, then we found out that she's not even contractual right now.
Right, right.
You know what I mean? This is why I ask questions and, like I said, it was just, well, this is it and you better believe what I say.
Yeah. And Jeff didn't know, and that's why I asked you in the very beginning with payables. I was so frustrated by not being able to get answers that that's why I was like, okay, she gets paid, so let's do something with that. Because people respond to money. So, how can we speed this process up? Or if we say she can't come back, that's gonna speed us up and look, we scheduled a meeting and we're gonna get it taken care of. We could've done this three months ago, you know, um, that's the stuff that I, I, that's the part that bothered me that you were, if you were harassed, I don't think it was by the radio and I don't think it was by Jason. I think it was what occurred afterwards, the social media storm.
Or when somebody triggered somebody.
You know, that became harassment against public officials. That became harassment against you. That came, uh, a, a private citizen who had applied for a job and I thought should've been, you know, secure under confidentiality. I mean, that became so embarrassing. Because what could've just been handled blew up and look how many people are negatively, negatively affected now.
Just, and for the record, for the future, if I think of anything what I'm thinking, then I'll say it. I'm not hiding anything. I think everybody on this board knows that I'm the loudest outspoken person on this board and I will not hide, I don't care who it's about. So, that's what pisses me off that everything that was sent in emails and sent on Facebook, whether you can get away with it or not, is lies. I told you aside, outside, talked to you man to man of what I thought about your social media before. I didn't bring it out in front of everybody cuz I respect, I'm, I'm a respectful person. Dragged you aside like a man. That's why it pisses me off that you did this. Because I wouldn't do that to you, but you did it to me.
There was nothing in there that was a lie.
I guess we'll find out one day.
It ain't a lie, huh? So, you think that, you really wholeheartedly think that I'm pissed because my wife didn't get the position?
Is that what that email says?
You just admitted it a while ago.
I, I said that's my opinion, yes.
You said, yes, that's what I think.
I, I...
So, why before did you make it look like that? Why wouldn't you ask me man to man? Is this what you think?
That I think that you think those two positions should be one because that, that's what your wife told you.
It doesn't. We're past that because I already explained why I thought that.
You just brought it back up. And you just said what my opinion is. I'm telling you what my opinion is.
We're, we're already past that, Harry.
Apparently we're not.[1676.62]